This has been given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law and the following matter. Notice advertising the Rowan County Times and handing to your post on January 4th of 2019, and those of all on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Miranda?
Here.
Ms. Correa?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mr. Catchmore?
Here. In our action meeting, we have a couple of resolutions that we need to address. Good evening, everybody. First is Resolution 2019-40. This is approving a RFP license number 558 and 559 for the Delran Middle and High School PTA.
So move. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Miranda?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchmore?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2019-41. This is a resolution approving the RFP license number 560 and 561 for the Delran Middle and High School PTA.
So move. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Miranda?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchmore?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2019-42. And this is a resolution authorizing 2018 budget transfers.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Miranda?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchmore?
Aye. And next, before we vote on it, just a reminder, a couple of questions we had. This is the resolution to authorize the purchase installation of new fencing in Notre Dame where the backstop was pretty severely damaged. And this is Resolution 2019-43, authorizing the purchase and installation of new fencing in Notre Dame Field under state contract T-0640. It's fences chain link, rockfall, wooden, vinyl, and ornamental install and replace. And the expiration date is 2/28/19.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Miranda?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchmore?
Aye. Okay, so our first item on the agenda is the need for, to appoint a COA attorney and planner. And we've received some information and direction, both from our township attorney and from Jeff Hatcher. Do we, does everybody understand what's happening here and the need for the RFP? As a point of transparency, so we were using the previous COA attorney, that was the previous township attorney, for the COA litigation, and the previous planning board planner, which would be the normal person that would serve as the township planner. And one has been replaced with the Stuplats Firm, and one is no longer the planning board planner. But we're so far down the road, we're, you know, to use a football analogy, we went from the goal line to the 10-yard line all the way down. And our township attorney feels that it wouldn't be prudent, and I agree, to not have those folks put back in place. So in order to do that, we're going to put out, we're suggesting an RFP. How do I do it?
That's correct, Council President. Transparency, statutory, and auditing purposes, we all recommend that.
Two RFPs, one for the engineer and one for...
One for the attorney and one for the planner.
Right.
One for the planner.
Yeah. So what we're being asked, I think, is just to authorize the putting out of those RFPs?
Correct.
It's pretty simple to me. So do we have to do anything to memorialize the authorization other than a...
Just motion it?
To authorize Jeff to proceed accordingly. So can I have a motion to authorize Jeff to put out two RFPs, one for a township COA attorney and a township COA planner?
So move. Second.
Do we need a voice vote or do we go all?
Voice vote would be fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. A lot of paper used for that one. Next is a presentation from the Green Team. This is the 2018 archery report plan on day 2019.
Yeah, my name is Al Clark. I'm with the Delran Green Team. A year ago, we adopted a community forestry management plan. We brought it in here, you voted on it, and we submitted it to the state, and it was passed on the first draft, which is uncommon. With that, we had three objectives. Begin a tree inventory and learn tree identification, provide educational outreach, and distribute information to the public, or, as we call it, paying the work. Now, working the plan, we hired Paul May, a certified licensed tree expert, to assist us in our inventory. To the untrained eye, most trees look alike, so the MTE is a great help in determining the species you are looking at. He also showed us ways to ascertain the health of the tree. Since you can't see the interior of a tree, you have to go by exterior clues, splits, broken branches, fungal masses near the base or the branches, just to name a few. We assigned a number, and you have a key in front of it, of one to five. Trees that we inventoried in Conroe, Don Deutsch, Vermees Field, and Brown Avenue, we gave them number two, which we will submit to Public Works, and they will determine by how much money we have in the budget, what needs to be taken care of. We've listed all at-risk trees, which are number five. To inform you, that we removed 98 trees and we trimmed 205. We measured each tree at a height of four and a half feet, which is, which is full of the diameter of breast height, and we marked some locations on GPS in some of our parks. We have noticed a very low diversity of trees in two of our parks. And with that, I mean, one park has two species, another park has one. So if any invasive pests or diseases were to hit these trees, we would lose them all at once. So what we recommend in the future, if we can get some more money from council, we want to start planting more trees so that we have no net loss. As you all know, we lost a lot of trees in the last storm. We planted six last year.
So you want to diversify and involve...
And we want to diversify our plantations. We don't want to, we don't want to go out and purchase six trees of all the same species and put them back in another park again. Like I said, if we have an invasive species or an invasive pest hit and we have them coming, as you all know, I spoke about EAV and the Asian Longhorn Beetle, and now we have a new one called the Spotter's Landerfly, which is working its way south. If we get that one here, we're going to have a bigger problem. We purchased three trees with the money we had from last year's budget. I spoke with Jerry, and we're going to plant them in Conroe, and that's what I want to talk about for Arbor Day, on April 27th. We bought a maple, an American elm, and an American swamp white oak. We went over the locations where we want to plant them. He agreed, and with your acknowledgement, and we'll have an Arbor Day on the 27th and plant those trees with Public Works' help. You have the plan in front of you. I don't have to go over that. We accomplished what we set out to do. We had public outreach. I spoke to the Delran seniors and a few other groups about Spotter's Landerfly and EAV. So you'll see on the Community Forestry Management Plan, we'll start on our next year's objective, which is to inventory more trees and more parks.
Did you put EAV in there? EAV.
Emerald Ashmore.
Yeah.
And you should help...
Not anymore.
Yes.
Oh, did you take the tree down?
I did.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ash in town.
Yeah.
Tempties really bad.
It's bad.
Three neighbors got together, we took out six trees.
Right. Did they confirm that there were Emerald Ashmore in them, or they just took them down?
It was snowing when they did it. So it was down, it chipped and out, gone before we knew it.
Okay.
Can be treated.
Yes, and there are a few people in Delran that have treated their trees, and we'll check back with them and see how they make out, but...
We have very few on township property.
Yeah, that's true.
Most of them are private homeowners.
I just say, because I work for another town that's a little further north, and they're getting investigated right now, all the ashes.
Right. They estimate that there'll be 200 million ash trees across the country. It'll be doing a lot of trees. That and forest fires, we need to start planting. And three trees will be a start. We planted six last year with the Delran Schools, three this year, hopefully more next year.
Al, excuse me, what's the cost of those three trees?
Those trees were 175 dollars apiece, which was a great price. They're burlapped, and they're approximately, what, 10, 10 to 12 feet tall?
Yeah, 12 feet. How old does that make them overall?
Probably three or four years old. What's that?
I think older than that.
Corey, I guess, yeah, maybe five, six. Some, they're two and a half inch caliper.
Not sealants.
No, they're not, they're not sealants. We are going to receive 625 sealants on April 5th, to be handed out at Conroe on April 6th, which will also be part of our educational outreach for 2019. And that about wraps it up.
Tree City.
Oh, Tree City. We got your signature, we're going to submit that. Hopefully, we'll get it. If not, we'll get it next year. We're hoping that they accept what we did for the schools as a proclamation.
As the event.
Yeah.
We'll have a proclamation, which we ask can decide.
Can decide.
A proclamation on Arbor Day, which we will do on April 27th.
Right. And we would like the mayor and council, we had Conroe Park at 1:00. We'll have that submitted to the newspapers and...
Yes.
Hopefully, you can make it.
Jay, was that a good change?
It's April 27th, it's a Saturday.
What time is that?
1:00. And the trees will be given out on April 6th at Conroe at 1:00 also. Any other questions? Got that? Everybody good with everything?
Yeah. Okay, so everything in?
Yeah. Did you get the thing for those tree trees?
Actually, for Tree City, the requirement is $2 per capita we have to spend. We were over $6 per capita. We're spending a lot more than the minimum.
And we got to have a tree ordinance and the proclamation. We want to thank you.
Thank you. You guys did a great job.
Great job.
You'll get all your Tree City stuff. You know, this guy, did you see them in the town, like, the trees?
What kind of trees?
No.
Did you... I can show you locations, if you would like, of where the new tree are going to go.
It's in there.
You might be in your hand now.
But they're black and white, so you don't see the color.
I have a black and white.
It's a hard color, you sure. It's cold, like, that's why it's on.
Is that in the first place?
It's basically here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
One's going by the street, but it's not white. And the other two, one will be over here. Swamp white oak.
There you go.
Well, yeah.
Great. This is for you. There you go. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the work you guys have done.
Thank you. And one thing Al didn't mention, one of the great things of why we are excited about planting at Conroe is that Public Works had a contractor come in and they trimmed all the trees. If you haven't seen them, they took out all of it, dead, and overburdened branches. So it looks really nice now, so the new trees just supplement the work that's already been done.
That's great, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
There's the trees.
Wow. So that's 10, 20 years.
That's when they were. Hopefully, I'll still be around.
When they went in, if that tree dies, like, it's really brutal. It's probably not...
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we've received the responses to the RFP for township, new township prosecutor. And Jeff, you look, judging from your notes, you want to give us your rundown on some of these?
I reviewed the five RFPs that were received. I don't believe the first two meet the experience requirement, so I'll skip those. The last three do. Peterson, Stephen Peterson, Chance McCann, and Daniel J. all meet the criteria to be free to appoint any one of those. On the Chance McCann, I only saw in the firm one individual that would meet the criteria, and that was Andrea Ray, according to their experience.
Yeah, I've dealt, I've dealt with Andrea from some other towns. She's really competent, very professional, so...
And that's, we okay with just one attorney? Like, that's fine?
Well, we appoint the one attorney from that firm, right?
Correct, Council President, and if she needs coverage at that point, that's acceptable to somebody from a firm that's qualified against that then, but we appoint by individual rather than firm title.
I know that the attorneys, there's a lot of local appointments, and I notice a lot of times that things get armed out to other towns, it might be, might be a cause for concern. You know, I reviewed it, I think Andrea Ray is a great choice. Anybody else have any comment from council?
I had my piece, right. My dealings with her are very professional.
My dealings with McCann law firm are very professional and positive as well, so...
Okay.
You know, that's a comment on her work there, I mean, I think it's a good firm, so...
So unless you all have other questions, it sounds like that we have a consensus. How do we do this? We do this by resolution or...
At the rowan meeting, we tabled this resolution.
Was it tabled for, was it tabled indefinitely or just for two meetings?
It was tabled until, you know, we could go out for the new RFP.
Then that resolution can be brought back up and introduced without the...
So we need a motion to bring it up.
Do we have a number?
We use the same, like, same resolution number that we used first time around.
If it was merely tabled?
Yes.
And it was tabled indefinitely, then it could be, you could use the same number, but to have the cleanest and most efficient approach, I would assign it a new number.
So we're not taking it off the table? So we're not taking it off the table?
We're not taking it off the table.
So it would be 2019-44.
Okay. Can I just, so I have to put in the read or do I just?
Um, well, there's not really...
Anything to read? Okay.
So, Janie, in the wherefore clauses, just reference that this, that previous resolution was tabled, that this new resolution will be appointing the township prosecutor.
So just your resolution on Andrea Ray, is that ready to announce?
Right.
Right. Of Chance McCann.
Okay. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve, this would be Resolution 2019-44, approving the appointment of Andrea Ray of the firm of Chance McCann as the township prosecutor.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Second. This is a voice vote or no?
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Miranda?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchmore?
Aye. Who notifies them?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Great. All right, next we have discussion of the Hartford and Conroe Road intersection. Tyler, you were the person that wrote this up to council. Is there anything that you want to give us by way of your input? And then Evan and Chance to talk to Jim about it, but I'm sure we're going to get, we're going to put a nice big pile of stuff for him to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's no surprise to members of, at least the council, that there's been concerns about that intersection for years. I know...
Just speak up a little bit.
Yeah, years ago, you guys did add that right turn lane, which I think was fantastic and really improved that intersection. I just think we should be proactive. I know the planning board has an application for some more commercial development near that intersection. The Malaral decision, you know, I think that intersection may become more strange, so I think we should just have in front of us ways to improve that intersection if we want to go forward. So I think we should, you know, discussing with Jim, if we can maybe approve a study or take a look at how we can potentially improve that intersection. Not saying we are, you know, there's a cost to all of this, but I think we at least, as you know, stewards of the tax dollars, who need to have that in front of us, so we can, you know, appropriately let people know that we're, you know, investigating this, always looking for ways to improve, and we've done the work.
Right. So Jim, I'm preaching to the choir on this, but what, I know that the issue that was discussed ad nauseam on social media was that, you know, we alleviated the pressure on that, on the, when it would stack up on Conroe for people who are waiting to make a left turn, and allowing the people making a right turn to go by. There's additional discussion now of people coming from the Bridgeboro Road, from Bridgeboro Road toward Route 130. If someone, if someone stops to make a left onto Conroe, it stacks up again and creates, it has it sometimes back all the way back to the light, and it's tight there. If, you know, people get over to the left, people can get around them. I don't know whether that it is or is not on private property or on our property, but you know the way we operate.
Yeah.
We like to do things incrementally and as inexpensively as possible. And, and, you know, just to put it, put the elephant in the room on the table, the traffic light is very expensive because of all the studies and things. I think we, you know, it's been talked about, maybe, I don't know, quarter million dollars between the studies and the work and the roads and the, and we don't know that we could even do it if we decided to ever move forward with that, because there's another traffic light so close at Bridgeboro and Hartford. So I think what, what we're looking to figure out is, is there something else we can do without going through the major expense of really investigating a traffic light, that we could help maybe alleviate some more of the pressure? That the response to that right turn lane was tremendous, but now people are used to that. And they, and they want to deal with the next step of pressure that it's a tough intersection.
Yeah. Mr. President, one more thing I failed to mention was, I know we're trying to get this Hartford Road off of our books, and the county take it over. Maybe improving this intersection may help them, they may be more inclined to take it over, that, you know, this intersection isn't great.
Right.
So if, you know, if we improve it, maybe they'll be more willing to take it over, and maybe there's a return on investment. So, you know, like you said, it is expensive, but I think we should at least know what we can do, or at least know the updated numbers.
Right.
Different options that we have, so we can at least say we did our due diligence, and then make a decision from there. I understand this is not, you know, something tonight, you know, let's add three lanes here, boom, 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 sign off.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think we should, as council, be proactive with this, with Jim's assistance, if everyone's okay, obviously.
Right.
And just stay on top of it.
So again, it's in, so that everybody, you know, folks may be watching a video and don't understand, that Hartford Road is a county road right up to the Delran line, and then it's Delran's road. And that is from the Moorestown-Delran border all the way through to Route 130. It's the only chunk that's not a county road, and that means we're responsible to pave it. We just did repave the section from the Moorestown line to Bridgeboro Road. So now we have, you know, and looking forward, wherever going to say, hey, could you guys take this road over, they're going to want it to be up to county spec, or at least not, you know, the most problematic intersection in Delran for them to take over. So that's what we, that's, you know, so not a big job, just kind of figuring out how to solve this problem, boys. You're an engineer, you figure stuff out all the time.
Yeah, I mean, it all comes down to, you know, what the problem is now, you know, right of way, which is, you know, laying the U element you can improve, and, you know, what it's going to take to actually fix the issue. So you gotta, you gotta study it, right? You had the traffic counts, you gotta, you gotta do survey, find out where the property lines are, and then you, what you do is you analyze that data, the traffic counts, and you, you know, the geometry out there and the dimensions, and you develop different concepts on some configurations that work. I mean, it sounds, from just describing the left turn issue, is you got to separate that left turn movement with somebody who's going through, and you're giving away to bypass. But, you know, we all know there's that house there, and the property line is right smack close to the edge of pavement, and there's really limited room to widen. Can you widen in the opposite direction? You're constrained on that side as well. There's wetlands at the, on the one corner, and then you have the church property.
Right.
The church where there are single-family homes.
It's impossible. There's, and there's some single-family homes on the street.
Yeah, I mean, but there is, it is at least open in there. So there might be property taking involved, there's utility pulling away, so all that's got to be gathered, all that information's got to be gathered and put down on paper and see if there are options.
So, so I think we, I think what council always likes to know is not just what it's going to cost to fix it, but what it's going to cost to figure out what it's going to cost to fix it.
Right.
So can you give, can you put together a little bit of an estimate of what it would cost to do all that studying and figuring?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's obviously an issue, it's not that uncommon. Something that's happened is all over, so, you know, put together some, you know, information and, you know, what we're going to look at, what you need to look at, and go through the whole step-by-step process of what would be the problem.
And it overpasses out of the question.
Probably. Sure, you can do anything you want. You can do whatever you want, but it's terms of what costs. But yeah, I'll put something together, and I can probably put together, you know, pretty quickly.
Yeah, great. I think that's what, I think we're just looking at...
Just information.
Forward thinking.
Great.
No problem. Mr. President, can we let the record show, like, this Ken Dunn left?
We, I don't know, but we can't let them...
He had something to do with the fire.
Regardless, he's, he's not a member of the council, so doesn't really know, either way, I just don't know that it necessarily needs to be noted, Jamie has the also-present category. So also not, not also-present. So next is the shared services agreement with Rowan County for snow removal. How appropriate. Jeff, do you want to give us some background on this?
Sure. We do this every, while we have been doing it most recently, probably the last 10 years, and that is that we provide the sulting, sanding, and plowing on the county roads and drying on the county roads, and this allows us to get reimbursed. Otherwise, we'd have to wait for the county to do the service. Quite frankly, in the past, what we found is that the county can't get out here fast enough for the level of service that the residents want, so we have gone down this route. Sent it to the solicitor's office that makes the recommendations, so there'll be a couple minor changes that'll go into this that go back to the county, but it's basically their shared services document. It ran out at the end of the year. The memo says January 12th, 2019, February 12th, 2019, work session, and we're discussing it, obviously, but it ran out at the end of the year. We just got it about seven to 10 days ago, so we're looking to get it back and moving, and so we would need council to authorize us to move forward on any agreement.
This is the, there's no real changes?
No.
From the last years of... From the last years of the unit, and the pricing is the same?
It's pretty much the same, yes.
Any other questions?
Basically talking about Bridgeborough, Fairview, Chester, and Summer Creek.
Not Hartford.
If it's faster than.
So do we need to, we need to vote on this?
Resolution, council president.
And we're doing it.
And I would just note that the form be subject to the approval or review of the township's lawsuit.
And we have a, so I just, so I need a motion to pass a resolution authorizing the agreement of shared services between the Rowland County Board of Chosen Freeholders and Del Ran Township pending the approval of our legal township solicitor's office. Thank you very much. I'm never sure how to put that when we do it this way. I do, and that would be Resolution 2019 dash.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Second.
Mr. Lyons.
Aye.
Mr. Morando.
Aye.
Ms. Correa.
Aye.
Mr. Morell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. Okay. So, next we have reports from our staff and professionals. So Jamie, you have any reports this evening? Jeff, anything you, do we, do we not, do, we're not going to close? Do we, do we do a resolution for that? Okay. I just, I just thought of, I was like.
We'll need a resolution to go and close that.
So, after we get through the reports, then we'll do a resolution to go and close. I forgot about that. Okay.
Just two items. In addition to the tree cleanup that they did over on Conroe Park, or finishing up the Conroe Park, weather committee will be done. In addition, the public works department's been working over at Lake Lonnie. A number of years ago, we had a storm come through, knocked pretty much almost 100 trees over and or broke substantially, about another 50 trees. They've been in there for three to four weeks cleaning it up, and we have some before pictures. I'll give them to you. I mean, the place was a rubble, and they've really done a good job in the last couple weeks cleaning that up, so.
Great. Okay. Jim, what do you got for us?
Just real quick, the 2018 road program in the Hartford Road, projects are generally complete, just some lingering punctual square debt the contractor has to get done. It's the same contractor for both projects. As soon as the weather breaks, some of the punctual items are asphalt related, so we have to wait till the weather's a little bit warmer, and they're ready to get out there and finish that. On Hartford Road, we are checking with DOT, except it's a DOT grant-funded project. There's like a drainage issue, a drainage pipe that's impacting one of the driveways for one of the properties that, that's right next to Stellwag, I forget the guy, the property address, but we're checking to see if they'll fund that through the grants. There's some leftover money for the grant, so we're trying to get that taken care of. We believe they are going to allow it, so that drainage pipe under the driveway, we gotta talk to that part. So as soon as the weather breaks and we get DOT's clearance on that, we'll, the contractor will finish that, and then we'll close out both projects. Do know both projects are gonna end up being closed out under the original contract limits, so, and then Hartford Road will be fully funded. Jake's Place, that's the bid opening scheduled before the 21st, at 10:00 a.m. We had about 10 people pick up so far, so that's good. Roof is completed, and I don't know, was on the last week's agenda for the closeout for that. Sidewalks, Route 130, that has now been completed, and we're just working due to closeout documents for both phases with DOT. There are a couple resolutions that I'm gonna ask you to have on for the next couple meetings. One is for abrasive alloys. We got a grant through the HSDF program, and we just need to do a couple resolutions from the governing bodies supporting the grant and accepting the grant money, and there's another resolution about what the future use of it is gonna be, and you'll see that, so we can put that in the next couple meetings. And, let me see, for the sewer utility department, there's a maintenance contract you have for on-call vendor. We put these out usually once every few years, and the last, for the sewer, there's a, there's a, sorry, a contractor, municipal maintenance, and they handle on-call electrical repairs and on-call mechanical repairs. So there's two separate contracts, they were awarded last March, and they're three-year contracts, but they're only for one year, and then you have to extend it each, for the second year, number two, year number three, if you're happy with them. I have no complaints from the sewer department on the use of them, municipal maintenance has been around for a long time, so the next meeting or so, if you could put on a resolution, extend a year or two.
We would recommend that it be approved.
Yeah, oh, that, and I'm just real quick on the sewer utility. Tankware cleaners are going in right as we speak, and they've been working successfully to help, you know, with the aeration tanks. And the Clay Street pump station, we anticipate being ready to advertise in the next month or so, and the TWA can respond to this, no big issue, I'll get you details on that. So, if any of the new members have questions on those project details, just let me know, and I can get you project information, what's involved. Other than that, do you have any questions?
Any questions for you? It's gonna be a report, appreciate that. That's good, good, good. Alan, anything from our legal department?
Nothing important this time.
So, now we will have reports from our members of council, starting with our new councilman in Ward Two, Tom Lyon.
Tom. No, no, really, just wanna listen and learn and hopefully pick up the pulse of what's going on, and I'll have more to say later, I imagine.
I've known you, I'm sure you'll have more to say. Tyler, anything for us?
No report.
Thank you. Virginia?
No report.
My call, no report. Wow. Okay, so, first let me say, happy anniversary to us. Today is February 12th, in 1880, Del Ran became its own little town. That was 139 years ago. I know that because the Historical Society posted something on Facebook today, thank goodness for them, and they, they indicated that our population at that time was 1,758 people, and now we're up around 17,000 people, so happy anniversary to us. And the other, the other two things I have are a little more serious matters. One is, I had a call from some of the folks that are at Simon &amp; Schuster, and the building, I forget the name of that exact, Croiters, is it, with Crest?
Crowser's.
It's like, it's the convenience store. It's good having a township attorney that's from Del Ran, that their trash is all over the place, ending up there, and I don't think they have a trash enclosure. Maybe we could have somebody go take a look down there and ask them to cooperate? And somebody had asked me a while back about having the master plan and our zoning map online, rather than people having to come and purchase it. Is that something that we could do? Do we have, do we have a current zoning map that is available digitally that we could have on the website?
Yes.
Yes, we do. It's there.
It's not current, it's the latest.
Latest, well, I mean, it's current.
Oh, yeah, we can do the zone map, road map.
As long as it's not from 1880.
It's probably from 2000. I mean, as long as we have a PDF, I can make a PDF. I think we have it.
For the master plan?
Yeah, I don't wanna speak.
Yeah, I don't know that it's, it might not be one document.
Right, I, it's, as I recall, it's a stack. Well, it looked like that ten years ago.
And it's different, you know, pieces of the master plan, like.
Yeah, I know, we have like a file of all the different master plans. Well, you have like the master plan, and you have reexaminations, and then a new master plan, so it's, whatever we can gather.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that we need to have it up tomorrow, but something that we might want to do, you know, as everything goes digital, it might be something that, I know people were saying, you know, how do we get, how do we get the zoning map? You know, there's.
The zoning map is online.
It's online.
It's a link through the code book.
It's a code book, okay.
There's a, there's a, the large link for the township codes, it's a.
Right.
E360.
Yeah, E360.
Right, so if we could, if we could get a link for that, that'd be great, at least, you know, the more transparent we can be, the better. So, and that's, that's all I have for this evening. So, before we open it to public, we're not gonna go into executive session, but we're gonna do a resolution to go into executive session. So I look for a motion to go into executive session. This would be Resolution 2019 dash 46, and that would be to go into executive session to discuss.
Contract negotiations.
Wow. Did you guys rehearse that? That was very good.
You're doing horribly.
And, council president, I would just note that action might be taken after executive session.
After, okay. And I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Yes, please do, my goodness.
Mr. Lyons.
Aye.
Mr. Morando.
Aye.
Ms. Correa.
Aye.
Mr. Morell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. Okay, so now I need a motion to go into public.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, now, we open it up to the public, if anybody has a question or comment, usually just, there's only three of you, so we, we'll just go right down the line. If you, if you have a question or comment, you need to state your name and address for the record, and there's no need to stand, however, it's, it's just a work session. So we'll start, and.
She's with me.
She's with you.
There's only two. This is Sharon Stellwag. My name is Judy Donovan, I live at 76 Pan Coast Boulevard here in Del Ran. I have, I bought the house in 17, in September, and I knew it had two septic tanks, or subpumps down in the basement. I searched the neighborhood, went and knocked on doors. Rarely do you have a problem. Been years since they've been used, and my whole entire basement is waterproofed all around where they had trouble in the past. And the inspection, when I bought the house, they said, it's fine. Everything looks good, your fields are good, everything looks good. We come now to November of this year, and my two subpumps are running continuously from the high water level that is across all Rowland County, if you've read it in the newspaper with the, with the high rain and that. And apparently, there are certain sections of Pan Coast Boulevard that where Home Depot used to be irrigation and a spring, and we have springs all over Del Ran, that that is part of what is coming down into my basement. Then I got, in January, the water was coming up through the floor, and it was coming right down the center, weight-bearing wall, so I kept sucking it up and putting it out, and then I decided I better do something about it. So I called Affordable Water. Affordable Water came, they gave me a plan, they gave me a contract, and for $9,000, they jackhammered my basement, they put in more French drains, more drains throughout the entire concrete floor in the basement. And in the front of my house, there, all four of my dam spouts of my house are buried in the ground. So, to, I, I was pumping with PVC pipe out into my front yard. My one neighbor complained. I kept putting it out further and further. Finally, I went across the sidewalk at my expense for the pipe, put up cones, had it out in the street, had a cone, and it was running down. I called Affordable Water, they came, and where the dam spouts come down are where my two subpumps are. They connected into the dam spout drainage bins into existing for I don't know how many years tunnels out to the curb. There's holes, you'll see them all over in the curbs, and that's where my subpumps are pumping. So, I asked them, is this legal? Yes. Do I need a permit? No. We get the first freeze, deep freeze, and my neighbor two doors down proceeds to, he keeps his subpumps high so that it doesn't run as much, because my electric bill was over 270, my gas and electric was $370. So, he keeps it high so it doesn't pump, just enough to keep his basement through. At night, he lowers it down, he flooded his whole front yard, he flooded the driveway of the house between us, the sidewalks, the aprons, and all the way down, 'cause we're two blocks down on Font Street, the only drain. He comes to see Jerry at the township, and proceeds to tell them that the lady two doors away is pumping her sub pump water out to the street that caused all of this deep freeze, and it froze all the way down to Font Street, Hub Street, where you turn in was absolutely horrible, and what was the township gonna do about it? Then he comes back, and he proceeds to tell me that this is what he told the township, and Jerry says, I am going to get a letter, and that I am in violation of ordinance. So, I came to see Jerry and discuss. I asked Jerry to please come out and see with his eyes. It's obvious the situation that was caused. My water has yet to ever freeze in the two deep freezes. My house, my neighbor's house, one dam, it'll flow all the way down. When he lowers his and floods the deep freezes, it freezes. Jerry tells me I am in, he came out, he says, you are in violation, and no, the township cannot do anything like your neighbor wants the township to salt, plow the ice down, and take all this away. So I said to Jerry, how can you say, before we resolve whether I'm in compliance or non-compliance, and whose actual problem this is, that Del Ran Township isn't responsible for this? How can you just say, no, it's your problem, not Del Ran Township's? Well, I don't know why, but an hour went by, and there was a front-end loader scrape the ice down to Hub Street, not down to Fonz, down to Hub Street, scrape the ice, a truck where they loaded it into the truck, they took it away, and they put salt down. Called, said, thank you very much, Jerry. I knew I still had the problem, so I asked him for a copy of the ordinance. He sent me a letter from the township, which he calls a friendly letter, and he sent me a copy of the ordinance where he says that I am in violation because of accumulation of water. Now, if you look at the front of my house, it's, shoo, one dam. Accumulation, it's a gray area.
Ma'am, do you know the number or the chapter of the ordinance that was referenced in the letter?
I caught a copy of it, so does Jerry. This is the letter, this is the ordinance, my friendly letter. So anyway.
Thank you.
I thought about this, and I thought about this, and I just. I thought about this and I thought about this and I just, I knew something's just not right. So I called Jamie and found out that Mr. Lyons was not appointed yet, that I would, I would talk to Gary. Gary was nice enough to come to my house. He rode up and down Pan Coast Boulevard on the second deep freeze, okay? He saw where my gutters go down. He saw that it runs out. I did not put their drains there, they were there. You could see in front of my property, my, I am not causing this ice. So anyway, he says he would take it into consideration and he would have to talk to the township council and the solicitor and the administrator and whomever. So I came last week to the council meeting, because I didn't hear anything from him, and was asked to come back this week because it's open discussion night.
That, that was, that was remarkable, regret on the events, that well done. So we have the attorney here. We did actually ask them to take a deep dive into the ordinances and see where we are, what the, what the issues are. So rather than me try to translate, I'm going to have Alan explain where we are right now.
Thank you, Council President. Ma'am, at the behest of council, we are currently investigating the code in its entirety. As you might have heard from the earlier discussions, it's fairly voluminous. I've looked over this section referenced in the letter. We're going to see how it fits in with the other maintenance requirements in the grander scheme of the code. But to the best of my knowledge, no enforcement action has been taken against you. You haven't received any municipal fines or summonses or anything along those lines, correct?
No.
We will keep you appraised. We're going to continue investigating at the behest of council. And if there are any updates, we'll request further information.
I called my homeowner's insurance because according to this Jerry, and Gary hinted to it, didn't say yes, but hinted to it, that I might not be in violation. However, if this water is pumped down to the street and someone falls or slips or has a problem, Jerry indicated to me flat out that it's Delran Township Street. But it also is assumed that if it's caused by my water, I get sued. I called my homeowner's policy. I have $300,000 liability coverage for injury on my property. If someone falls because this water going down and icing and my neighbor decides to belly dump it after dark at night, how can it come back on me?
Is that another question to write to them, ma'am, as township solicitor? I, without the privilege of viewing specific terms of your insurance policy, unfortunately, I am not permitted to provide legal counsel to the citizens themselves and provide counsel to the governing body.
Of course, I understand that. But what they're saying is, it makes sense. If it's Delran Township Road, they're not covering it. And who's going to be blamed? My other thing that's in question here is, I have Affordable Water that I paid $9,000 for. I'm very satisfied with their work. Affordable Water, if I am found in violation of an ordinance, is then held liable with this license. And he has agreed that whatever it takes to correct, he will do it. I asked him to come to this council meeting. He refused. I asked him to contact Jerry. He claimed that he did contact Jerry and Jerry told him I am in violation and it needs to be rerouted to my two going down, two, from two sub pumps down to my backyard. My backyard is like 200 feet or more back there to Green Acres. It's uphill. You pump water uphill.
Downhill.
Here we go, here we go. Plus, I'm not going to allow any pipes running 200 feet on both sides of my house above the ground. Because when I put a for-sale sign on it, would you buy it? So where I am now is, it's not a matter of you need to research, you need to do this, you need to do that. As far as I'm concerned with Gary, he was approached weeks ago. I don't, we need to come to some resolution because I don't sleep at night for fear of what's going to happen to me. Now, you can look at me that way all you want. I'm a 74-year-old person trying her best to go along to get along. I don't have many more years left, so I need to know soon.
I would say at this point, ma'am, no official enforcement action has been taken against you.
That's correct.
And in terms of a final resolution, governing bodies do not adopt, as a matter of business, resolutions saying we will refrain from further investigating this issue because we frankly, that's just not the way the governing body does business and we don't know how facts will develop or unfold in the future. But at this point in time, it is my understanding that nothing has incurred and there's no additional enforcement action expected at this point in time.
Now, okay. Waiting between last week's meeting and this week's meeting and all of that, this gentleman can attest to it, he was posted on there. The residents, Delran Township residents, Jamie straightened out that it was not the township, that it's the residents, went on Facebook. And a bus driver complained about the road condition of the ice. And she went on Facebook and 34 people had to have a comment for the lady at the top of the hill, or the person at the top of the hill running the water. You replied, his name was on there two, three times. Now, I'm not saying he didn't, he didn't reply in favor or disfavor. He replied politically, saying, come to me if you have a problem and things like that. That's fine, that's fine. But it's not just this. And Affordable is waiting to see what I should say.
When will we, is it or isn't it violation of the ordinance?
Well, I don't think they've made the determination.
Okay, because that's what we need to do, right? We need a big, definite determination. We haven't issued a formal legal opinion on that.
Okay, right, that means, to me, that's.
And my grandfathered in. Were the codes when the house was built 60 years ago, that these pipes going out were there? And my grandfathered in.
And that's, that's correct, ma'am. There is a concept such as known as pre-existing non-conforming condition, meaning so long as that was their place before, as long as it's not expanded or increased the use of what's going on right now, it's generally grandfathered in under ordinance prohibiting the type of discharge that's occurring right now. But again, I have, we haven't issued a formal opinion to the governing body as specifically this section, which I saw was referenced in the letter, which is the first time I've seen tonight in terms of the overall code and what's going on right now on the ground.
Okay, when may I expect something?
As to whether or not the township will communicate with you directly, that is a policy decision for them. As you know, legal opinions and conversations and communications between council and the governing body are confidential.
Okay, well, I know the result.
Absolutely. So, so what, what will happen? And Alan, I'm going to ask you to, I know it's, it's, there's, there's, you're weighing lots of options because there's so many things involved.
You know, there's hundreds, if not thousands of people that are doing this right now.
Right, so, so, you know, the sooner the better, obviously. Once we find out, I'll make it a point that, that we will, wow, we will make sure that it's communicated to you, one way or the other. If I have to, if I have to come over myself, we'll make sure that that happens. And, you know, so I would just, there's really not much that we can say beyond that. Once we get an opinion, we could decide what we're going to do from there. But we'll certainly communicate that to you as soon as we know.
So there's no deadline, no, no reference?
It's hard, it's hard to put a deadline upon.
I realize that, but suppose another deep freeze came. Now, the second deep freeze, I don't know who to thank, but thank you very much. Whoever did it was kind enough that Delran out there for two days.
I believe that was Jerry.
Taking it down the road and doing this and doing, doing. I would have thanked Jerry if he had told me that he had done it. I would have thanked him again. I gave you a thank you before. But it only happened the day after Gary showed up at my house, I must say that.
Purely coincidental.
Purely coincidental, that's, that's fine. Well, I, I really just, I'm not pleased with what I heard. I understand what I was told. I know it's political, I know everything takes time. But believe me, between the webpage and the neighbor, my time is short. My brain is short.
It's very true, it's very, understand, it's very trying. It's great to have a good friend that comes with you all the time.
This is my sister-in-law, yes, and I love her. She, she's from, she wouldn't say a word if she died, but she gets there for moral support for me.
Great, are you all through, Mr.? You all good?
I am through, am I good?
No, fine. Chuck, anything tonight? We have one more member of the public that's here. Are you all there?
I was, Dan O'Connell, I was just stopping in. We just, we were asked to stop by and they just honored Charles Kendra, a 50-year volunteer of our fire department. Assemblywoman Murphy was here with a resolution from the General Assembly of the State Senate. And the mayor just gave a resolution. His whole family is down there. Action News is down there. It was very nice and I thought since I was so close, I'd stop back and. It's nice to see you.
Nice, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'll ask for a motion to come out of public?
Certainly.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries? All right, so, so in an interesting timing, we're making motions to go into executive session. We have a motion to go into executive session. We have a second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries? We're going to take a short break.